7 o'clock, we'll call the meeting. Alana, do we have to turn this on, or is this on already? Okay, just so everybody in the room knows, the meeting is being recorded. And the procedures will follow if the audience or whatnot has questions. The questions go through the chairman and then we'll find the answers out for you. All right, let's get right into it here. What do we have? Oh, the minutes. We have the minutes from the meeting on Monday, July 8th, 2019. If anybody had any chance to read them over, I've read them over. He couldn't find anything. Either changes or deletions. No misspellings by Alana, that's a great thing. Thank God for spell check. Do I have a motion regarding the minutes of Monday, July 8th, 2019?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting, Monday, July 8th, 2019.
As presented. So there's a motion to accept the minutes. In a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. 4-0-0. Okay, tonight, voting in attendance will be myself, Casai Nasrallah, Jerry Joy, and Peter Porcellin. Robert Durgen and the alternate Daniel Borsari are not available for tonight's meeting. Okay, passes. Do we need to sign anything on that?
Yes, please just sign the back.
Okay.
The left.
You're back in pole swing.
Today's what, the 9th?
9th.
Pole swing. How are you doing? How are you doing?
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
There's a point.
There you go.
About as long as though.
Can always find something, but it's whether or not you are.
Okay, seeing that it's 7:05, we'll move right on to petition number 901. Petition 901. "The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 12th, 2019 at 7:05 PM in meeting room number one of the town hall, 499 Plummer Street in Halifax, Mass. on the application by Austin R. Beatty to build an addition for an in-law apartment to be located at 24 Pine Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Austin R. Beatty of 24 Pine Street, Halifax, Mass., O2338. As shown on assessors map, 67 lot 2C-0. Title reference book 47424, page 117. The applicant is seeking a special permit for an addition to their home for an in-law apartment in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under Schedule of Use Regulations 1677D12. Area is zoned conservancy and agricultural residential. Petition number 901." Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Want to give us a brief idea of what you're doing?
Yeah.
You got plans or anything?
There should be plans. I think you're sure I'll talk to you.
Hi. Let me grab.
Yeah, trying to get apartments building in law for my mother. Very small, small footprint in law, basic, one-story. Not full-based and crawl space.
Where are you on Pine Street?
24 Pine, right after the bog, heading towards 105 from 106.
Right after the bog. Oh yeah, on the right?
Yep.
Just before the stop sign?
Yep.
Okay. Jerry, can you grab that, please? How big is the piece of property that you?
It's three acres.
It's three acres?
Yes.
Jerry, can you see this a little bit? Oh, you got one? Okay, Mr. Beatty, what do we have for shared space here? If you want to come on up here, that'd be great.
So what we have for the shared living space is this, very good.
The one that says shared?
Absolutely. I could have highlighted it if you wanted.
I actually have.
And what is that?
That is going to be, it's non-existent, obviously, so that's going to be built as well. Basically, it's a shared entryway as well as living space.
Oh, shared entryway?
And living space. So there's no door here. That's where our door is right now. That'll be removed. And obviously make the opening as big as we can there. There's a six-foot opening on her side.
Okay, are these pre-existing cabinets?
Exactly, that's our kitchen, yes. I do have pictures of the outside if you want to look into it.
All right, that'd be great. And it's a one-bedroom, living room, kitchen, bath?
Yep, very basic. She doesn't want much.
Is that a farmer's porch deck in the front?
Nope, just a simple little deck.
And a deck off the back. What's it going to be sitting on? Are you pouring a foundation?
Yeah, it's not going to be a full foundation, just a cross.
Just a cross. And this is the existing house in the suite?
Correct, yep. From there over, so we're trying to build.
Is your mother living with you now?
She is. My wife.
Why are you smiling?
Yeah. We had that chalk last time.
I'm your man.
Yeah, she sold her condo almost a year ago now. So it's been a long process getting this file of this, so.
Oh, and there's a full foundation on the house with a walkout?
Yeah, on the existing house, yep.
On the existing house.
Oh, so that's the door you were talking about?
Yep.
Any other members have questions, please, feel free.
Did you mention all the shared utilities are all shared, heating, electricity?
Yep.
So we got a, it says three feet, four inches, that's what's going to be the entrance way from the?
On the existing side, yes.
So that door going on the side, did you see the pictures?
Mm-hmm.
That's going to remain the same?
This is getting removed. And we're just going to frame in the opening. So it's being framed and open.
Trying to be a six-foot open.
Right, that's why I, we have the kitchen cabinets there. I made that as big as we could. There was a little bump out there. I got rid of that, but then that's just the exterior wall. She does have the six-foot opening on her side. Obviously, we didn't have that to begin with. And then, you know, after finding out that, we cut a big old six-foot hole in our wall.
So that's a standard door, that's as far as you can go with the cabinets?
That's actually, yeah, that's right up against it, so.
Who's doing the work?
Four generations over on Wood Street.
Is there a deck off the back of yours? Is that what this is, or?
That's mine, yeah, that's, yep. Yeah, as you can tell, I had to make the adjustments for the shared space the best I could. And that's obviously not professionally done. We made it a little bit bigger the first time we got the blueprints redone because we knew it had to be bigger. And then I adjusted the openings.
But this is where the cabinets go now?
That's right up against, all you have is the frame of the door, from the cabinet to the door. And then, like I said, there was a little bump out here to hold the door frame. I got rid of that because obviously if you don't have the door, you don't need the door.
What do you think, Casai? Where he has the six-foot here, is that enough for you? Because obviously, what the concern is of the board is that if the door's replaced and your mother moves out, is not there, becomes a two-family, and...
Is that what the foundation is, you think?
What's that?
This is the foundation under here. Do you have foundation?
Yeah, actually, if you can see it pretty good from one of these pictures you have here. So that's obviously just that one little bump out there. So it should be from there over to here, and then, yeah, it's the exterior wall.
Oh, so it's just that door frame that we're done with.
Well, you put a stipulation, there won't be a door there. But they have a six-foot opening.
Yeah, that's the point, yeah.
Right. Other than just a shared entry, what's the use going to be for this?
It's a living room, living space. That's, I mean, our layout here.
Mudroom type thing?
It's more, yeah, more or less, I mean, living room, yeah.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yep, because ours, our layout's very open, so it's just all going to be one, basically, our kitchen's going to go right into there and the living room, so.
So it's all going to flow together?
Right.
All right, why don't we start off, is everybody familiar with the property?
Yep.
I am. If I would entertain a motion as far as the site inspection go, it's usually the practice of the board that we go out and look at the property or walk the property, unless members of the board are familiar enough with it that they feel it isn't necessary.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the onsite.
Do I have, is there a motion to waive the onsite?
One second.
In a second? All those in favor of waiving the onsite for petition 901? They signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 4-0 to 0 to waive the onsite. That just saved you a month.
That means I can go home this month?
Yeah. That's awesome. Okay, entertain a motion regarding this petition with any...
With a 901?
901 with any type of conditions or whatever.
I'd like to make a motion to accept petition 901 with the condition that there will not be a door here at all.
Right.
You know, as long as there's no door here, I'm fine with it. If there is, then I'm not done.
So that there be no door?
In between the?
Between the existing house and the new addition?
And they have the six-foot opening on the other side where the living room is. That just protects us from somebody who might close it up and?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Put an apartment there, or tell your kids in there.
Yeah.
It's not a bad idea.
How will we set for distances from the side lot lines and whatnot?
That's pretty good.
Yeah, it does look nice.
You got three acres, probably in the middle of the three acres.
He's in his pine tree. It's 59, 30.
Oh, yeah. It looks like 55 feet to one side and a bazillion on the other, off the back is okay. What's it from the?
That's all his land, so he's all set.
Where is Pine Street on this?
They say it should be...
This is the existing, so this Pine Street should be over here? So we're good?
Yeah, we're fine. Is that where the Howard kid lives?
Yeah, it did, yeah.
Oh, here's Pine Street, yes.
It's way off.
Yeah?
Yeah. It's if anyone closes the back with their 50s back, so.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion with the condition that the door is removed between currently the existing home and the new addition? You okay with that? Because if you don't agree with that, you could certainly withdraw.
That's why I made those changes, unless you guys see that.
All right. So I have a motion in a second. I'll call for voice vote. Casai?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
And Jerry, yes? So it's 4-0 to 0. Alana will run you through the paperwork and the procedures and whatnot.
Thank you very much.
Didn't even hear it, huh?
Well, too bad. I'm going to make, thank you.
You want the pictures with the application?
Yeah, can we leave them in the filing?
Thank you.
Alana, do we have the things to sign there that?
Right here.
Oh, you got right there? Did I put 901 on? Yes, it is, it's right there.
I'll give that to her. That's the minutes I'll sign.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Jerry. All right. See you in less after quarter past seven. We'll move right on to petition 902. "The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 12th, 2019 at 7:15 PM in meeting room number one of the town hall, 499 Plummer Street, Halifax, Mass. on the application by David A. Rota, Skrull Contracting Company, to build an addition for an in-law apartment to be located at 292 Thompson Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Maurice Issa and Myrna Habib at 292 Thompson Street, Halifax, Mass., O2338. Apologize if I butchered that pronunciation. As shown on assessors map, 89 lot 1-C. Title reference book 36989, page 311. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct a 24-by-36 addition in a 16-by-18 sunroom to the existing home to allow for an in-law apartment in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under Schedule of Use Regulations Section 1677D12. Area is zoned agricultural residential. Petition number 902." Hi, is somebody here to speak on this?
Good evening, gentlemen, I'm David Rota, representing Myrna Gadsden, my client, Myrna Habib, owner.
Good.
Her mother would be the proposed occupant of the in-law. We have, I believe, we have designed it so it's within the confines of the setback requirement, so where the location of it is, and I believe...
Where are we, on 292 Thompson?
Before Highland, after Orchard, on the right, the green house.
Between the power line, right? If you pass the power line?
Yep. The big four.
On the other right, yeah.
I'll put mine there if you guys have it. I don't want to cover your mic. It's split, I have the picture of the front and the rear of the dwelling where we're going to propose to put the 24-by-36 in-law. So from the street, it won't impact the view from the street at all. If you drove by, you wouldn't even know it exists, that it's going to be cut around.
So what's going on here by this?
Correct, it's exactly, six, so this is within the setback, but the new design is going to be a little proud of six feet in from the corner of the existing garage, so it's within the side yard setback. And that'll also help encapsulate the common area from this dwelling, which from the front view would be on the, basically, the farmer's porch. If you walk straight to the back, would be where you'd be.
Was this the garage here? No.
Yep, yep. Existing garage, so existing garage. Here's kind of the entrance right there, so the backside of that is where.
So this is Thompson Street here, so you're looking in this way.
All right, what is the?
So that's your exact, that's exactly right there.
Follow. And the addition is going up?
Pretty much, that's the, that's the complete opposite of that. And the addition's going from, so six, it's going to start six feet off this corner, 24 feet from there, which will encapsulate this doorway here, which would be the area, the common entrance from both.
What's the square footage of the proposed?
860 square feet.
Including the sunroom?
Not including the sunroom. Sunroom's going to be down, that's a sunroom that's on grade, concrete patio with a, pretty much.
Is it shared also, or no?
Yes. Actually, I will, so what we would actually do, I talked to the building inspector, but I'm going to pull, so this is the sunroom here, which was originally going to be off her kitchen dining area. We're just going to push it against the house, so it'll, it'll be, the sunroom will be accessed from both areas as well.
We're on this.
Pretty much where, pretty much where that deck is, yep. So it'll be two-sided, so there'll be two walls of glass here, and the house will be, the new dwelling will be a portion of one wall, and the existing dwelling will be another portion, and then there'll be 90 degrees of all glass.
So this deck here is?
Gone.
Is coming out?
Correct.
Or at least made shorter?
Actually, that, that's going to become a concrete patio as well. So see, see this deck? See it right here in pause? That's where the existing?
Oh, okay, I was looking at this.
So that's going to be, that's going to be where the sunroom's going to be.
So you're moving this sunroom right up near the house?
Correct.
Okay.
So it'll be, so it'll be, you can, you can access it from both dwellings.
It should have access from the garage, too. You have to put a door, the doors are there.
So they will share the sunroom?
Yeah.
Correct.
This is the layout of it?
I'm sorry?
Is it the layout?
And the sunroom's going to encompass the balcony, so she'll even have access down through there, too.
That's kind of showing it from the side where the sunroom would be.
So this is the opening that's going to be shared?
Actually, the op, the...
Not for this one here?
No, that's, that's the common. So I didn't show it in the drawing because the plan just showed a kitchen, but the kitchen's going to be here. So right where this sunroom's coming to there, so if that's acceptable, I'd actually have the common area, it could be the sunroom, but there's actually a small window.
We need, we need a common entrance between the two buildings.
Yep.
It has to be six feet.
That's, that's, so let me, so in other words, this much space that's going to go between both dwellings, is that correct?
This is, the existing building's going to be right in this area.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And this is going to be the entrance to both, and that has to be six feet.
Well, so my question would be, just so I understand, but she can also have a separate entrance, no?
Oh, no, no, hold on a second. This has to be six feet?
Correct.
Wide.
Okay.
You can have entrances on both sides, that'll make...
Okay, no, but I...
The main, the main entrance to the both building has to be six feet.
The main entrance?
So that's the, that's the play on words that I'm confused about. It's not the main entrance. We can consider this the main entrance, as long as I have six feet.
The issue, so unless there's no opening at all, I think your plan would open the air.
Correct, it's just...
If you're going to make, if you're going to make this as the opening for the shared living space?
Yes, sir.
It has to be six feet.
What is it depicted here?
Without a door.
It's not depicted on that drawing, that's the, that's the error.
The only end is from outside on this, but I think your plan is to, is to sort of reflect it here, is that you want?
Correct, correct. But that will be adhered to, sir, and we can make that stipulation, but that was the, so really, this, this is the, the actual kitchen area is here, so here's the, here's the six feet of opening. But here's technically, this, this would be our front entrance, that's what I was...
The entrance is fine, but you have to have a...
So they have, yeah, you have to have a six-feet-wide, doorless?
No, no doors.
Yeah, I can't even have like a pair of glass French door, interior French doors?
Because that would create an apartment, you know, that they could rent, so that bylaw, you can't approve that.
But even if she's a, I mean, just thinking, she's, for now, she's a snowbird, so if I'm going to close it in the winter when she's not here, I have to have this big six-foot open gap in my living room?
That's the law.
Yeah, that's the bylaw. We're not supposed to approve that unless it has that.
You can't change that.
That's why we're asking.
Because we were just going to basically design that summer heat, you know? That was going to be ductless mini splits that heated and cooled.
So your mother, your mother goes to Florida and with the time?
Right now she does, but she's not going to be able to for much longer.
I understand, but while she's going, you're going to, you're going to have to heat that house.
I mean, yeah, but you don't have to, I don't have to have, let's say, in my living room, a big six-foot open room, access to another room. I mean, that's my living room, I just don't think it's necessary for me in the winter and in this, you know?
The issue that we have is that the bylaw is tough.
I mean, can't it be like glass French doors or sliding doors?
It has to be open.
It has to be, yeah, doorless, without a door.
No door, no door in between both, the buildings.
Because it's, I mean, it's all...
Because it's going to be shared.
You're going to have to share it, because you're both, you're going to butt them back.
Even if there's multiple interior accesses?
That's what the, that's what the bylaw says.
I know, but...
You're a contractor, you read it, you know what it...
Yeah, but I interpret that differently. But that's not, I mean, if it's shared, that's why it had it specifically designed, so there's a lot of shared space, but that doesn't mean you can't put a separation between the two. It's not, it's not an exterior door that can be locked.
You can't put a door in between the two buildings.
Okay.
So what's the, what's the total square footage of it again?
I came up with 1,152 square feet.
Well, this, so that's what I asked the buildingist. This is what's under foundation. That's like a, that's like a, all that is, is a, is a, that's going to be on grade, that's concrete slab on grade that I'm putting glass walls and a glass roof on top of.
It's living space.
It's not living space, no. It's not heated, it's...
But if that's where the opening is into the sunroom, and that's the shared space, and that's living space?
The opening, if my client wants the, with this situation, the opening's, that'll be the kitchen, the opening, that's the area where we were going to, we were going to travel from one unit to the other, as I read the code, have common area. So this was going to be an interior door that you could enter this unit from, not an exterior door, but if it needs to be a six-foot opening, then the kitchen area would have to go over here, because that's the area where it would have.
Okay, this is the, this is the entrance that we're going to go back and forth.
Correct.
And that's right here.
But that's the sunroom, right?
Yeah, it was actually here at this window, as it's designed, but that's basically, yes, you are correct, that's the area.
This is the door that you're going to be passing through back and forth?
Correct.
Okay, and that has to be six foot?
Okay.
No doors?
No doors, it's a six-foot cased opening.
Yes. Does that lead to the sunroom?
Yeah, that leads to the sunroom, right?
Well, it was going to lead to the sunroom, but if I have to have it, if we're going to leave it a six-foot opening, then I can't have it lead to the sunroom, because the sunroom's an unheated area. So that's why I shifted down.
Can you mark in that drawing where that six-foot opening's going to be now?
Yes.
Hold on a second. We're drifting here. This, this opening has to go into the in-law apartment? Yes?
Correct, yes.
Okay, where is the sunroom?
After it.
So, so... This dwelling continues here. So that'll be the sunroom. If the, that door is right here, so if the requirements are that this, that I have to go from this dwelling to this dwelling, see, I was going to have it both ways. I was going to have you access the common area sunroom, but that is an unheated room. So the plan was to have a pair of doors here that was going to enclose this from the outside, and there's a window in the rear where I was originally going to have a three-foot door that would also go straight into this unit without going in the sunroom. But if the requirement is, and my client accepts it, then the six-foot opening would have to be here, and the kitchen would be over in that area. I don't know whose pen I brought. Does that answer your question, sir?
It's starting to now.
I just don't know how I can live with a six-foot opening to a sunroom all year round. That's my living room.
Not to, it's not going to be to a sunroom, it's going to be to the building that your mother's going to live in. The sunroom has, you can't...
So it would be to her living room?
It has to be to her living room. So this is what this gentleman's trying to say. This is your house, right? And this door is right here? The building's going to be in between those two doors?
So she won't have any privacy, though?
Right?
Or I won't have any privacy?
Pretty much, from here to there, yes.
Okay, if you're, what is it, 24? 24 wide?
Correct.
Or it could be 12 from here and 12 from here, and then there's going to be a six-foot opening in the middle?
Correct.
And then she goes from this house to this house. The sunroom has nothing to do with the, with the shared living space?
I concur.
Sunroom's separate. The, where she's going to sleep and eat and do all her things, that's the shared area.
But you'll have no privacy. I'll have no privacy.
That's, that's the way the law dictates. We can't change it. Every in-law apartment? Every, every in-law apartment.
I've been looking at in-laws, because we actually considered buying, and they all have doors and it's private. They have separate...
An elevator?
Yes.
Can you, do you have a list of those? Because they're all against code. Every... Every, everyone I've ever seen, and I've been, I've been here for years.
But this is specifically safe, cause I, I thought I took my time to read the code, it says six feet.
Only because we've had this conversation with people probably about a hundred times.
Yeah, this week.
It just doesn't seem right there.
We tell them, okay, it has to be a six-foot door open.
What do they do?
They get, they get the, they get the permit, we don't, we're not inspectors, we don't go into their houses.
Right.
We don't know what they do on them. But we have to, when they come in for a renewal, that better, that better be no, no doors in it. Because either you, you lose the permit, then there you go.
As a contractor, you're obligated to.
We don't wanna be in trouble.
No, and I don't wanna either, that's why I'm being completely honest, saying like, you know, it's, I mean, I want my mother to be with me to care for her, but I can't have her, you know, waving from either. I have a family too, and.
And that, and that's really the difference between an addition. And an in-law apartment with a bathroom and a kitchen and all that stuff.
She's gonna need me soon, and I want her to be next to me, and I don't.
That is the difference between a two-family.
Kitchen and the bathroom and all that stuff versus just an addition.
But it's not, I mean, it can't be used for rental property, we share access through the sunroom, we share access through the basement, she's gonna share my garage.
Common utilities.
Everything's the same, so.
We don't know what people do, once they get there.
But I always thought, so, I happened in the business a while, I thought, the, the whole issue of six-foot openings with no doors, when you're trying to put a bedroom in something and you don't want it to be a bedroom, this is a completely different thing, where, where, where getting permitted permission to put an in-law off the place. The common area means that you, you, you can go from one portion of the dwelling to another, doesn't have to be.
The word is shared.
Shared, that, that's.
Okay.
But that's, that's very, very ambiguous, and I, I, I believe, I, with all due respect, I'm not trying to be a hard guy or whatever, I, I definitely interpret that, because if I have a pair of French do, I have a pair of French doors from my kitchen to my living room, that's shared. If, if, if I can't lock a door, that's shared. I wo, I wouldn't want a tenant, and that isn't the reason why we're having this, that's why I'm having.
But that's what.
But if I have a pair of glass doors that are, that are.
You, you just said, you know, you're preventing a tenant, we don't want tenants.
But that's what we're saying.
That's what I'm saying, if I had a tenant, I'd have a lock on my door, if I have a pair of French doors with bars and sockets.
To, to keep people, people honest and stuff like that, you have to have an open, an opener with no doors. No doors whatsoever. That's, that's our bylaw.
I, I'm not, I don't read that in the bylaw, but I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's incorrect, but I'm certain.
Forcing as long as I've been here.
So why do people do that?
What is the, uh, square footage of the house with the garage?
Eight hundred and sixty, sir.
Of the existing one?
No, of my home.
Oh, of the existing dwelling, um.
I think about twenty-five, something, about twenty-five.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I have a question, what if we were to?
So, I mean, as far as the, uh, the requirements of the, of the percentage wise for the in-law, can only be a maximum percentage of the existing floor space now, do you meet that requirement?
Or nine hundred square feet.
Or whichever is?
Doesn't say, doesn't say whichever, that's another ambiguity in the, in the code, that. So we've specifically designed it to be less than the nine hundred square feet.
You have eleven hundred and fifty-two?
No, I have eight hundred and sixty, that's, we can, the sunroom is not the, the sunroom is, 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 she, she's coming.
The sunroom is a structure, it's a structure, it counts. It's, it's what's being considered the shared living space.
No, it, no, we're no longer, that is, that isn't what we're considering this. If that, if that was the case, I'd actually say, that would be great, cause, but that's not the shared living space. The shared living space is gonna be where, what we just drew here, where, where we're making this a six-foot case.
When you add the sunroom to it, right, and you go try to get a mortgage, they're gonna have, they're gonna ask you, that sunroom is part of that house.
But, but if it's, so, just so we understand what it is, just so we're, we're all on the same page.
Same as the sunroom.
It's a concrete slab on grade.
It's still attached to the house.
With glass walls.
Attached to that house, yes or no?
It is in fact attached on two sides.
And it becomes part of that building. Comes part of the square footage, it becomes the square footage of that building. Now you got eleven hundred square.
How can it be, if, if it's, if it's.
You're using it, you're.
But it's not heated, it's not heated, it's an unheated space, it's, I, I don't believe unheated space can be considered living space. You, you can't tax me as living space, it's unheated.
It's taxed too.
Of course it's taxed.
It's taxed, not as, not as living space, so.
Of course it's taxed.
Everything's taxed.
A shed?
What's the, what's the size of this, eight eighty-something, right?
Eight six.
Eight sixty-three.
Eight sixty-four, and, and the sunroom is two eighty-eight.
So it's not supposed to be more than fifty percent of the first floor living space?
Or.
Or nine hundred square feet.
Cannot exceed.
And you have eleven hundred and fifty-two square feet.
And if you count the sunroom.
If we're considering the sunroom, then I have no argument to that statement, that's an accurate statement.
Of course you do.
Where do we go from here? I have to.
Well, I, I personally, not speaking for the board, personally myself, I would like to see an, an updated, uh, floor plan of, of what's being built, cause coming up here in drawing dashes and dots is, is not what's before the board, it's not what we're voting on. That, that's my opinion, before we, we go any further. Uh, I don't know how the other board members feel, but I, I, I personally wanna know exactly what's being built and where it's gonna be.
Cause, you know, our next line, we give you a permit, and something else is going on, it becomes an out.
And if, if there's any type of substantial change from what's being proposed, then, then the variance is null and void, your permit's null and void, uh.
Yeah, but you have, you have a building inspector certainly would keep me honest to that degree, that's right.
But we need, we need a certified plot plan, what, certified plan of what is going on that piece of property.
Right, and this isn't, and we don't have one.
You have a plot plan, but we don't, your, your living space, your, your actual layout is not correct. You tell us you're gonna do something, but we can't, we can't vote on what you're gonna do. We need to have a plan showing everything that conforms to the code, so we can vote on it. Otherwise, what we vote for is not gonna be of any use to you.
So you will need a variance on the, um, maximum lot coverage, right? It's fifty percent of the, it's more than fifty.
For the, for the, the size of the addition.
Right.
With this, with the sunroom, I mean, the, the thing I guess that, for me personally, that concerns me is, is that we kinda shifted the whole thing while we've been sitting here, I, I definitely would feel more comfortable if we saw the, the plans with the entrances and the sizes and all that stuff.
Understanding why, why I shifted it, because I'm, I'm reading the code. You, common area living space and not being able to have a, a door between both dwellings is definitely an ambiguous area that, that, so that's why I, I'm reading, it's not like we're unprepared. I was certainly was prepared last month when nobody was here either, and I got sent home and lost a month, I could've had this, a, a month.
It wouldn't have been approved like that anyway, I'm gonna, there's no shared living space on this, this floor plan, at all, none. There's her, there's her apartment, and then your house, there's no area that's shared. If it's the sunroom, then you're over fifty percent, so there's, there's a lot of.
So you want us to apply a variance for that number there, eleven fifty-two?
Right.
Is that something unusual for this town?
No, it says it right in the bylaw.
So if we came back with the drawing?
So, so, shall, shall be no larger than fifty percent of the first floor living space of the main residence or nine hundred square feet. Whichever is greater, not whichever is less, whichever is greater. So that's in your bylaws, but I, but I, but I certainly, I know I reviewed this in, in.
That's what I was reading on my phone, I wasn't, not paying attention, I was reading that.
So, so, I'm gonna respectfully question the, the interpretation of this, because right here, under twelve B, in law apartments, uh, excuse me, A, in law apartments shall share a major utility, check. Share, s, s, share some shared living space in one shared entrance with the primary dwelling. All of those we've achieved with what I, with what I, what I brought to the board.
Not through the sunroom, sir, not through the sunroom.
It isn't through the.
I'll be honest with you, it, it's not necessarily an argument, it's, it's our votes, and I would not vote for that as presented, it doesn't sound like other people would as well, so I, I think we're looking to try and get you to a point where we can say yes, and I'm not comfortable saying yes.
And the shared entranceway between the main house and the in-law would be what? The shared entrance, where would that be? You're talking this?
No, it was.
What is the shared entranceway?
The shared entranceway. The shared, the shared.
The shared entrance.
How, how it was originally, right, the shared entrance was, this door was going away and this window was becoming a door. That's within her dwell, that, that can travel from her dwelling to her mother's dwelling, that's why we applied for it. Not, nowhere in what I just read says anything about.
You're gonna close this and open this to six feet?
No, I was gonna put a rig, I, I'm not saying, so, your, your, what's, what was proposed is not a big six-foot opening in this, which, that's why I'm more prepared than you're saying I am, cause this window was the common area entrance, so you can travel from this dwelling to the in-law dwelling.
Six feet.
But, but sure, you don't have that in your bylaws.
It spells it out, it has to be six feet between the, between the two, the two apartments.
I'm still missing the entranceway, the shared entrance between the two.
The main entrance off the road?
Between.
No, 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 no.
Between the two, so.
Between the two.
Okay, so originally what he said was this window was gonna be a door, three-foot door, that's what he was saying.
It has to be a six-foot door.
Okay, well, I don't.
That, that's what we're, that's what I'm telling you, I don't see it in your bylaw, I brought your bylaw. I read your bylaw before I designed this all.
Every petition that comes before us is a six-foot opening. We're not gonna make a special, you know.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not denying what you're saying, but what, but I'm, but what I am, is questioning your interpretation of your own bylaws, cause that interpretation is incorrect. I read it, I know, and I have done this, and I have been doing them for a while. If I can travel from her dwelling to this in-law dwelling, that's common entrance, it's common entrance. That doesn't make it that I have to have a hole in the wall so, and heat both units. That's really defeating the purpose, that, that's absolutely not how, in my opinion, your opinion is that it needs a six-foot entrance, but something has to be written into that bylaw, cause as it is during this application, as I'm applying for it now, yours does not state, it doesn't say that, I brought it, I had it, I read it before I even started to do this three months.
All right, well, I guess then, these are your options, you, you can, uh, you can come back with a revised plan that shows exactly what you're going to do. You can determine that, you know, or at least show that the eleven hundred and fifty-two square foot addition is, uh, fifty percent of the, uh, first floor living space, which we haven't seen. And you can either withdraw your application without prejudice, or we can postpone till next, next month and rehear it after you submit the plans to us. So it's basically your option, whatever you wanna do, either or.
I'll defer to her.
I, I definitely wanna hold till next month, I have a question now, before we do go. So if we were to come back and say, we wanna do eleven hundred and fifty-two square feet, and I'm gonna do a sunroom that adjoins my mother and myself, and I am gonna have, against everything I feel, a six-foot opening in that sunroom, is, would that something that would be acceptable?
Yes, that's what we talked about.
Even though it's gonna be now eleven hundred and fifty-two?
Well, as long as, we, we, as long as you show us that it's within fifty percent of the first floor.
More than fifty percent of my first floor, and it's gonna be more than nine hundred.
So then you'll, you'll need to have that portion of the, of the bylaw varied also.
Is that something that's, I mean, is that something that, like, right now you're telling me?
It's a variance.
Yeah, but right now what I'm hearing is there's no way we're gonna accept anything less than a six-foot gap, right? Is it possible you would accept eleven hundred and fifty-two, being that my first floor is probably, I don't know, I don't know, my first, my whole house is twenty-five hundred square feet, and upstairs it's pretty, so yeah.
So your, your first floor is probably a lot, and it's all on it.
So is that some, what I'm saying is that even an option before I go through this all over again?
And, and all of this is predicated on the idea that it's gonna be an in-law apartment, a kitchen and a bathroom and all that stuff. If it was, if it did not have the kitchen, we'd be looking at a different set of requirements, because the, the town specifically has super strict rules, specifically this town in particular has super strict.
So she should either have privacy or kitchen.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you guys come every five years and inspect, I don't understand why, I mean.
We don't come every five years and.
Don't have to renew every five years.
Does it say anything about a six-foot opening or not, sir? No respect.
I don't see it at this position right here.
I just, you know, this is our home, and we just wanna bring my mother to live with us, we're not looking for, to build a multi-complex, I just want something comfortable where she can live, and most likely, this is our forever home, most likely I'll be living in, and my kids will be living in the main house.
So, do you wanna postpone this until next month and then, and then come revised, or you can withdraw the application?
No, no, I think I, I wanna postpone it, because I need to, I need to do this.
All right.
Bert, we would need to re-advertise, correct?
No, we would not have to.
There's no variance though in that?
Oh, for the, uh, to waive the, uh, eleven hundred and fifty-two square feet was not advertised.
Right, I mean, you would need to reply, but I would think you would need to re-advertise.
Can, is there any way I can call you tomorrow, this is just a lot, I've taken in quite a bit.
And we definitely. Does it have to be re-advertised on a, on a revision?
No, as long as they wanna come back and.
No, no, I mean, because it's eleven hundred and fifty-two square feet, they have to vary the, the.
Side lot line?
No, 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 the, uh, requirement of fifty percent of the first floor living space, that has to be varied if they're gonna put eleven hundred and fifty-two square feet on.
I mean, the sunroom is, is what's making it jump that high.
Course it is.
And if you, if you can do without the sunroom, you don't have to, you know?
I'll talk to her.
I, I, another piece of this that we haven't really talked about a whole lot is, e- every time we vote for one of these, we look at space that you will be using and she will be using. And I don't know if that's the sunroom, but if it is the sunroom, that, that definitely brings you eleven fifty-two and adds that whole variance piece in. But if it's not the sunroom, there, then there's, if the kitchen's right there, then there's really no shared space really at all, unless you're planning on having that kitchen open and using that, cause that's right next to that door, so, like, what we, what we.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. So what, what, the issue we always look for, we look for the same things every time. We, and, and this is what we ask every single person, and every single person when we've approved that I've voted for, has met these stipulations, so that we always look for a shared room, the last one we just looked at five minutes ago had this. They had a shared room that both are gonna be using right by the entry. They, they have a shared utility, which we haven't discussed yet, and I'm, I'm hoping that that will be the case. And then there's a shared six-foot doorless entryway between the two houses. And I, and, and I don't know about the utility, but I don't see the shared room. Might be the sunroom, but that brings you kinda to over that number and that opening, which is, which is the issue here. And if, if that's, every in-law I've ever voted for and has, I've seen pass since I've been on the board for years, that's, they've all had that.
Yeah, without, I agree, without the sunroom, there is no shared living space.
Yeah.
What if I came back to you, and I, I'm just thinking out loud, and said, I want, I need eleven hundred and fifty-two square feet, we turn the sunroom into a great room, between my breezeway and hers, and she doesn't have a sun. Just into one big great room, with a lot of windows, a lot.
That's exactly what we just passed prior to you.
That's, I mean.
It was a shared.
It's a shared space, yeah.
Yeah. And then, the word shared, you have a great room and she has a great room, that's shared, that great room is shared.
And it's open between the both places.
And she doesn't have her sunroom.
And, and the, the only reason I think the bylaw is written this way is because, like, what, what we saw is sealoffable. And that, that's what you want.
Honestly, I, if you come see my house, my house is a lot of little rooms.
So the issue is, twenty-five years from now, if you decide to move, somebody buys that so they can rent that apartment out. You might not, but the next person will be, is it's built that way.
The guy don't buy his own house?
Yeah.
He doesn't have an in-law, he doesn't want anybody there, he's just having his.
But he sees that as an income-producing thing and doesn't go for the thing.
We love our families too much.
Right, and then eventually that'll happen, I mean, I was there three hundred years old.
I have three kids, I got another one who wants to stay.
Other than that, I don't see a problem with setbacks or anything like that.
No, no problems.
Yeah.
If the sunroom stays, then, uh, yes, you're gonna have to, uh, show us that it's, uh, either less than fifty percent or, or vary the eleven hundred and fifty-two, cause of the bylaw requirement that you read us, you, you understand that when you read it to us. or, or vary the eleven hundred and fifty-two, cause of the bylaw requirement that you read us, you, you understand that when you read it to us. So, uh, that has to be added and get varied for next month's loading. And then, of course, an, an updated final blueprint of it, of what the final decision's gonna be. In the meantime, you can decide if it's a sunroom, you can decide if it's a great room, whatever you wanna do, but we can only vote on what's before us, you know, and.
That wouldn't even come here, I wouldn't, unless it's over a certain percentage, so, sorry, cut ya.
Alright, you, you can give Alana a call, and if, uh, we're gonna have to, like I said, you have to let her know, cause you'll, you'll have to re-advertise the, uh, the, the additional variance that you're requiring if you're going for the eleven hundred and fifty-two square feet. Or, uh, that would, I.
Do you want to leave the advertising fee or?
Is, is that up to the newspaper? We can't do that, can we?
We have to.
Yeah, okay, we'll do that.
Whatever.
We'll do that then.
They have to resend it out, Tom?
Cause you have to advertise it though, right, Alana?
They have to send it to the abutters, too?
Yes.
The abutters, I've spoken with them, I've knocked on, they, I know them, they're all fine.
You do have to.
There's no problems with the abutters.
Yeah, but they have to be legal.
No, I, I.
We haven't made the change.
But I don't think you're gonna, you shouldn't expect any problems from the abutters at all.
I don't think you'd have to be, uh, to, and know the abutters again. I think just putting it in the papers, cause it's a continuation, right? And you wouldn't.
If it's advertised, then they would have the ability to come and voice their objections to it if, if there was, if there were in.
So you'd like to get the.
Yeah, so, yeah, we wouldn't have to notify the abutters, as long as it's advertised. Alright, we can do that, we'll put you on the agenda for, for next month. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does this one, Mommy, goes over?
Well, if you, you might as well take it if it's.
Yes.
Yes, we'll continue until next month.
Thank you for your time, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we did either.
You what?
I don't know if we did either. I'm motioning to continue to.
Did we want?
Do we have to vote on the motion that we just extended it, or is that, no?
I don't think we did have.
Yes?
We got a motion.
True. Alright, I'll accept a motion to, uh, can continue petition number nine oh one until October meeting. Nine oh two, my, my fault, nine oh two.
I'll make a motion to continue petition number nine oh two to October seventh.
In the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four, zero to zero. Alright, seeing that it's five minutes of eight, petition number nine oh three. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, at seven twenty-five P M in meeting room number one of the Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by Stephen and Heidi Boardman. Go in and have a seat for a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located at eight twenty-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Stephen and Heidi Boardman of eight twenty-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight, as shown on S S's map fifty-nine, lot four, title reference book two zero five nine six, page three eighteen. The applicants are seeking a new special permit for their pre-existing in-law apartment for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section one sixty-seven seven D twelve. The area is zoned commercial, petition number nine oh three. Hi, Mr. and Mrs. Boardman, how are you?
Good.
How are you? So, uh, you're showing, you're seeking a new special permit for the pre-existing in-law apartment, so it was there prior to when you bought it, you didn't build it?
We didn't do nothing.
Okay.
It was built maybe three, and we bought it in ninety-nine.
Alright. Why don't you come on up and show us what you have, what do we have for blueprints on this, anything?
This is a.
Is this renewal?
Yeah, a renewal.
Okay. Alright, so you guys haven't added any or made it bigger or extended the, the non-conformity and nothing like that? It's, what's it being used as? Someone's parents living there?
It's, it's just an apartment, right now we have a, a friend of a friend living there.
Yikes.
Are they related?
Huh?
Are they related?
Yeah, not blood related, no.
Do you share any common space with them?
No.
So the, the, the entrance between the two buildings, is a door?
No, it's, it's above the garage, so it's an outside entrance to the apartment.
And how was it an in-law?
I'm sorry?
And how could that be an in-law?
When we bought the house, her mother had lived with us, and she had passed away, and then her brother moved in. And for the past year, we had no one in there, so we just was helping out somebody, and they've been living up there.
So this is a temporary situation?
Yes.
She actually lives in Vermont.
Is the kitchen still in there or not?
Yeah, it's a kitchen, it's a full, like, regular apartment, there's no access from our house to that, it's on a.
And it's always been that way since you bought it?
Oh, yeah.
Since ninety-nine?
Yeah.
You're saying all the wrong things.
We need to be honest.
You're, you're being super honest.
Talk about a brother pressure.
It just, it was empty for a while, and, you know, it was just a waste, so.
And you were temporarily helping somebody else?
Yeah.
My mother lived there for years until she passed away.
So you wanna turn it into an in-law?
Oh, yeah.
No, it wasn't an in-law.
So what do you wanna do with it?
We just, we're here to get a permit, we got a letter saying we needed to renew the permit, so we're trying to renew the permit.
Then.
Okay, uh.
You gotta hit the guy up.
The, uh, the, I don't know, maybe the building, building inspector, uh, didn't explain, but it has to be an immediate blood relative to, to live in there for an in-law apartment. Your brother would qual- would qualify, even though he's not an, you know, in-law or, or whatever, uh, of course your mother.
Cousin or anything like that?
You know, a fam- immediate family member. Basically, if I understand it correctly, what you, you're asking us to renew a permit for, for a situation that doesn't comply with the zoning bylaws, you know, as far as an in-law apartment for rent, you know, uh, if it's a, what?
I'm gonna read from the letter that is the original permit.
Okay, that'd be great.
This might help them.
Okay, let's do it.
This special per- so this is from nineteen ninety-nine, when it was originally approved, so.
Uh-oh.
No, that's what her mother was saying.
Okay, so, so it says, this special per- permit was granted due to the fact that the board found it would not be detrimental to the neighborhood, as it has been in existence for some time and used by the previous owners as an in-law apartment. The utilities and septic system are shared with a separate egress to the in-law apartment, which is located above the garage. So it never, it was approved and never met the requirements, they just decided to say, sure.
Who's that sound there?
That's somebody. It was here in ninety-nine.
Oh, and it might gone.
Here in ninety-nine?
No.
No. Bust it. Okay, so.
I must have been an orphaned.
Has it been renewed?
Has it been renewed since then, Alana?
It probably would need to be renewed. Uh-oh, now that, now that bitch hasn't here, we're in trouble.
Bert, do you need me for anything?
I'm sorry?
Do you need me for anything, sir?
Uh.
I came over from across the street where somebody else.
Moral support?
Yeah.
I mean, at least, you know, you know that where she is.
Right, good point.
No, I think, okay.
Alright, thanks Charlie.
Four oh nine, okay, so. It easily could be, yeah. It's August of ninety-nine, so that would make it twenty years, so it's four renewals.
Had it been renewed since ninety-nine?
We haven't been here since the original nine.
Since here?
Doing this process right here.
How long ago did your mothers stop living there?
Two thousand and ten thousand and four, two thousand and four. But she had moved down into our house, and my brother moved up there, cause I had to start caring.
And when did your brother move out?
Um, last year.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so it was used as a, to meet the requirements of the bylaw, uh, being an immediate family relative. Currently, it's a temporary situation from, I don't wanna put words in him out, but that's what, how it was explained with, there is a non-family member living there, and, uh, but you have to know that, just that, that, that it can't be used as, as a rental apartment, and it's a, if it's an in-law, it has to be an immediate family relative. How does the board feel? Any abutters that had any, or any objections to anything?
Not so I know much.
Where is this located?
What's that? It's, uh, right across the street from Circuit Street, right?
Yes, Steve's Auto Recyclon.
Everything bought right up and sold last year.
Yes, and, and we never would've known if they weren't so honest with us, you know, and.
Right.
It's fine, yeah.
What about if it, uh?
This was sent in two thousand fourteen, but that's the only thing I have.
Was it, excuse me, renewed in two thousand fourteen?
It was the third renewal, it says.
It's the third renewal?
That's what it says in the letter.
Yeah, so this is the fourth.
Alright, so.
It's, it's still active.
It, it, if it was, it's still active, we could, my suggestion would be, it could be renewed with the conditions that after the temporary situation has been remedied, that it revert back to immediate family members.
Well, this is a whole new special permit, just so you know.
It's what?
It's a whole new special permit.
Oh, it's not a renewal?
No, cause the original was, um, has a whole different, uh, petition number. So this would be a whole brand-new special permit.
So the, the fourteen was different?
Because according to the bylaw changes.
Yeah.
They're, they're doing, they're giving, they're needing a new special permit every in-law.
That, that thing is a relic.
Starting sharing and after, every five years.
Stop quoting.
Yeah, there we go.
So, that means I would have to conform to all the new laws that are out now? Just by hearing this path, the person for us, then that in-law is.
Has to be an in-law.
You can't, you're on top of a garage.
Right, but that wasn't, you know.
Yeah, if they were pre-existing non-conforming.
You're on top of a garage, and it's not like, this guy here is trying to Mickey Mouse things.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a new construction, this is.
Right, that's new construction, as opposed to pre-existing non-conforming. Well, what's the feeling of the board?
Oh, it's been, it's been renewed three times.
Yep.
Now they want a special permit?
A special permit for an in-law apartment?
But it was renewed for, for an in-law.
Yeah, why, why do you require a, a new special permit?
That's what, that's what the new bylaw, that's what you guys have been doing, and then five years from now will be a review.
Yeah. With all the new stuff.
Which means it wouldn't be applied, or anything, it would just be a hearing and review.
Do they have, they share electricity and the heat and all that stuff?
Yes, that's all under us.
It's not really an in-law, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, but it.
The family's not in that, that's the issue.
I guess my problem is if it, if it's a new special permit, would it have to? And it was new construction, it would have to meet the requirements of the, of the new zoning. But we're talking a pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yep.
That, that was existing prior to, to the new conditions under, under an in-law apartment.
I mean, they can't, they, they can't, they won't be able to.
There's no way they can live up to the new, new standards.
Right.
And it has been renewed up until.
Right. I don't know if it, if it's a new special permit, or, or do we just renew it?
I think we just renew it. As, I mean, they can't change it, they can't, they can't meet the new requirement.
Special per- yeah.
There's no way they can re- uh, either just renew it and let it go like that?
We, we, for them, we need a letter from there saying that, saying from then, they're gonna renew their special permit and not apply for a new special permit? Or do we just go with a renewal?
Well, it's been there, renew it, with the condition that.
Yeah, but I think with the new bylaw that we passed to share, you're gonna have all the new.
Right, and they can't, so that's why it should be renewed, is, I guess is what we're saying.
Kind of be like grandfathered in, I guess, would be the terminology for it, correct?
I mean, the, the issue is that it's not technically an in-law, cause it's not a, it, it's not a family member that's in there. That's the, that's the big sticking point, like, we renewed a bunch, and they.
Right, right, so say, say, you know, I ask the person to leave and they leave, do I just come back for rezoning and?
No, not if it's renewed, no.
And once we renew it, it's, then the, the person leaves, you can put your brother in there, you can put.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yes, but if they left.
If we don't have anyone, you know, now we have to sell the house, because it's just a waste to have an apartment sitting there, and we sell it as an in-law.
As an in-law, yes.
And that permit would be picked up.
Yes.
You can sell it as an in-law, cause you've been, you've been renewed as an in-law for three times already.
Right, okay, so, and I guess.
I think we should renew.
You, he won't be able to, to go through the, the conditions of the new permits. Renew, renew it the way it is?
With, so then, if I understand the board correctly, then we'd renew your special permit for an in-law apartment with the condition that, uh, no new tenants would move in after the temporary situation has been alleviated with your friend there, unless they were immediate family members. And that the in-law apartment would remain vacant unless they were immediate family members. And then we would renew your special permit for, for an in-law apartment. Am I getting that correctly?
Right, yeah.
I mean, for temporary, if he's gonna live there for three months, six months, but not ten years.
Right.
Or not a new tenant.
Right, right.
A new renters.
Question I have, and I don't know if you could answer it, this something the building inspector. Would I, is it possible to make that an actual legal apartment? Instead of an in-law? Like, like bringing stuff up building code wise or anything?
Uh, yeah, with a multifamily dwelling, I think you'd have to apply for a special permit for that.
Different guideline.
Yep, and, and you need acreage.
Codes and stuff like that.
You need a certain amount of acreage, yeah.
Acreage, okay.
Yep.
I mean, to, to be honest, then.
I'm just curious.
I don't know if this would meet it, cause we don't have any of the information, but that would make it fully legit. Like, if you had that special permit, you would come back here and ask, ask for a special permit for a multifamily, yeah. But you have to meet certain, and it's pretty strict.
And, and yes, the building code would, would be subject to approval by the building inspector anyway.
Correct.
He would have the criteria that you'd need to, to meet that.
But I was just curious if that was an option?
It, it's an option to look into, you know, whether it's financially feasible, or it's a financially feasible option, that's a whole different ballgame, you know?
I mean, there, there are, there are places in town that are built like that, that have multifamily dwellings, yeah.
How much acreage do you have?
It's just a tick over an eight foot like.
I think it's one.
One five four, yeah, one, one oh four.
It's commercially zoned.
Let's think, I'm trying to think of what the.
It almost has to be like a duplex or something, wouldn't it?
Well, it'd be, you'd have to.
No, this duplex is right, like, three houses down from us.
Yeah.
So, I'm on Paul Street, we approved that one. Can't remember how many, we had to look at for that.
There's a lot to.
Lot of pieces to that, but I can't remember.
Yeah, well, that's, again, so, yeah.
Her balls is.
Yeah.
Do I have a, a motion regarding petition number nine zero three?
I think we should renew petition number nine zero three as presented for the, for the next, for five years, whatever it is.
As an in-law apartment?
As an in-law apartment.
At, at which time the stipulations, or the conditions would be that, uh, the temporary tenant that's currently there, when he moves out, would only be replaced with an immediate family member to meet the criteria and definition of, of the in-law apartment requirements, yes?
Yes.
What do you think? Which sounds, but I don't know if I could say it again.
No.
Hey, she is typing on it.
She had it all.
Alright, so there's a a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
So there's a motion on the floor which has been seconded to renew this special permit for an in-law apartment uh re at uh the address was. Uh eight twenty-nine Plymouth Street uh for uh the pre-existing, non-conforming uh in-law apartment uh at that address with the condition that the current temporary tenant uh when he does leave the property would only be replaced uh with a immediate family member in accordance with the requirements of the Halifax zoning bylaw.
Thanks for your honesty.
Yeah.
Uh I'll take a votes vote, well, first of all, uh we do have a motion on the floor, it's gotta be voted on, but where it's pre-existing, do we need a uh we need a site inspection?
No.
No, cuz we didn't vote on on, we'll do that after we after the motion's voted. I'll call for voice vote, Kasiah?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
Alright, so it it passes for uh and now I'll accept a motion for the uh the onsite inspection?
Make a motion to waive the onsite.
In a second?
Second.
So there's a motion and second to waive the onsite, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero. We did it.
Awesome.
Should I have my camera?
No, no, you'd run on you'd run on a tape. Oh, and 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 now that it passes, I mean, you as long as you can comply with those conditions, you know, you can certainly withdraw if you'd like. But as long as I didn't ask you, as long as you can comply with with those conditions, that'd be fine.
Do you have any other questions?
Would it be possible just to have something written saying statement conditions?
Oh, yeah, I will send that to you guys.
Okay, stating, okay, everything that.
It's a good question.
Great.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You're free to go.
Thanks, sir.
You too. Good night.
Good night.
Today's been great.
Can we maybe get an easy one?
I think we had one, right?
The next one's an easy one.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be easy, alright.
How did we get there? How did we get there?
What?
Cuz they have they have to have a number of acres for every unit they have, how did that get there? Remember that?
Oh, uh, yeah, that's a whole different. Okay, well, alright, let's move on.
Right.
Our final.
Ay, ay, ay.
Petition nine oh four. Are they open in the other they open the kitchen or something? Yeah, that's lost.
The deck? We're doing a deck, go.
The deck.
Okay, alright.
What number?
The green apple.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Your pitch next.
What's your last name? Pitts?
That's the last one.
Did I miss one count?
Sorry. That's it, Pitts is horrible.
Mr. Pitts, yeah, come on in. Well, how did you skip him? The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, September ninth, two thousand nineteen, seven thirty P M in meeting room number one of the town hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by David and Kelly Pitts to build a deck constituting a continuation and extension of a non-conforming use to be located at ten Ash Road, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by David and Kelly Pitts of ten Ash Road, Halifax, Mass. Over two three three eight is shown on assessors map forty-three, lot six, title reference book one nine one four six, page zero two eight zero. The applicant is seeking a special permit and variance for a deck which will be in violation of the setback requirements of the town of Halifax, section one sixty-seven dash eleven, requiring variances of the front setback of Ash Road from fifty feet to thirteen feet and from the front setback of Doris Road from fifty feet to nineteen feet in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under sections one sixty-seven eight A, one sixty-seven eight C, and one sixty-seven dash eleven. The area is zoned residential petition number nine oh four. Hi, Mr. Pitts, I call you, wanna kinda come up here quickly and and well, you don't have to be quickly, but you just explain what we're doing here? Ash Road and Doris. This is the front or the back of the house?
That's the front.
The front?
Yeah, and that is a he told me to take pictures, I'm very nervous, so.
Oh, take your time, we're he's the only one that bites.
Not true.
I've never done anything like this before.
No, 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 no problem. Okay, so what are we doing, Mr. Pitts? This.
So I I I built this deck.
Okay, so it's on there now, there we go, which is which one?
Okay.
This one or that one?
The front of the house would be.
This is Doris Road?
Yeah, so it would be this one right here, it would be this one right here. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So it's already out, yeah. I built it.
The deck in question is already constructed, is that what we're talking about?
I built it because my grandson, I I was nervous about him being out in front of the street, so. Okay. I I I was never, like I said, I've never done anything.
It took like a great job, did a nice job. This is pre-existing?
On the back of the house.
In the back of the house?
Yes.
Oh, this is the front door is right here?
Yes.
This is this one, okay, this is the front door facing Ash Road?
Correct, and that would be facing Ash Road too, that would be facing like I took that picture from Doris on to.
Okay.
Okay, and the deck is how big?
It's six feet off the house.
So it's six by?
Then the length of the house.
So all it's all it's doing is increasing the non-conformity like six feet or something?
Six feet.
I didn't add out, I just did a re-existing deck except for the fact that I added, I went out instead of, I didn't go out, I went along.
The width of the house.
The width of the house.
So how big was the deck prior to that?
It was the same as took basically, it was the same as right here.
Okay, so this was added on?
So I added that on, I just added.
But it doesn't, it's no closer, he doesn't increase the non-conformity by any more than the thirteen feet that's pre-existing and it's on the side setback, well, actually, yes, on the side setback. And on the other side, on Doris Road side to twenty feet.
That's it.
But because you sit on the corner, you have two frontages.
Correct.
So that's why you have to vary fifty feet on Doris Road and fifty feet on uh well, I don't know, personally, uh you know, where he doesn't encroach any closer than than it was already pre-existing. It uh it's certainly within the established character of the neighborhood back there, this you know, we all know where that is. Behind the Lycastory, I'm familiar with it. There were other plenty of other places of the cottages back there that are the decks and whatnot are are much closer than the thirteen point three feet here on the Ash Road and on the on the nineteenth.
So we just expanded the existing front reference?
Right, this was, yeah, it was just this here, he just added that portion, I understand. Well, our options are, you know, if if the board feels that there is a hardship because of the topography and layout of the property and the property itself only being, what is it, six thousand? Six thousand four hundred sixty-seven square feet. And it doesn't derogate from the intent of the bylaw and it's certainly within the established character of the neighborhood. The board could grant a a variance for the deck or the only other option is you tear it down. And uh you know, where there wasn't wasn't a permit taken out. But I could kind of understand where kind of didn't make any sense why you'd replace the replacement deck as opposed to a brand-new structure, even though it was increased certainly for the safety of the of the family young family members, but uh how does the board feel? That's the only way I look at the two options.
Yeah, I think that's I think that's fine, I do.
Kasiah?
That's pretty good.
What's it on, sonotubes?
Yes.
What was the old deck on?
Just cement, it was not, it was just, it was just a pad, yeah, my wife fell down there, that was one of the reasons. And then my grandson was walking out in the street, I got kids, I come around the corner, if you know where Ash and Doris come from.
Right.
Doing about fifty-five miles an hour, and I got a little nervous and so.
Yep.
Again, I've never done a thing to my house, I I was very nervous and that's why I put that up there and.
Since we're all familiar with the area, do I have a entertain a motion to waive the onsite?
Motion to waive the onsite.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh there's a motion to on the floor to waive the onsite, in a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes four zero zero. Okay, what do you wanna do, gentlemen? Unless someone has a a third option that uh is there an over? I'm sorry, is there an overhang on it? No?
No, no, it's to the house, and there's a gig on it, you know.
Alright, uh what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to accept petition number.
Nine oh four.
Nine oh four as presented.
Second.
Uh any conditions or stipulations other than it would not be increased again of the non-conformity without permit? Or is that just understood, we don't have to put that in, huh?
I think that's understood.
I think so too.
I will never, I can tell you.
Dare say.
This day, this is the easiest one tonight, so maybe you might wanna think about it.
I wouldn't put a door in my house without talking to.
She don't wanna sun it, so some room, yeah, right?
Sure, next year, next year, there won't be a second story.
No, there will be nothing, there won't even be windows.
Okay.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded to accept petition number nine zero four as presented. I'm gonna call for a voice vote, Kasiah?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Jerry?
Yes.
Motion passes, four zero zero.
Thank you.
Alright, uh she has some paperwork for you over there. What's that?
Okay, that was your easy one.
I came to have one.
Thank you, you are really, thank you very much.
Not really, he's a funny guy.
Oh.
See, first of all.
Decision, oh, this was, what's this one from?
Okay, that's the old, the small one.
Yeah, we got.
That's your signature on some.
You said we're gonna have fun tonight, you boy.
I did.
Yeah, you did.
Did you put me on that? Is that why we didn't want to show up?
Yeah, maybe.
Alright, here we go, gentlemen, how we doing?
Good.
Come on in. Uh the Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, July eighth, two thousand nineteen, at seven oh five in meeting room number one of the town hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Green Apple Farms for a variance for lot access via a different location than the legal frontage of zero and two forty-one Franklin Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Baucher LLC and Green Apple Farms IV LLC of zero and two forty-one Franklin Street is shown on assessors map eighty-two, lot one, title reference book five oh seven three four, page one ninety-one. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow access to the upland portion of of the parcel zero Franklin Street being developed as a passive solar facility which is blocked by wetlands and other jurisdictional resources areas by using two forty-one Franklin Street, map ninety-three, lot nine A. Granting this variance will allow the applicant to access the rear of the property with the least impact to the resources areas and and affected buffer zones. The requested variance is in accordance with the Halifax zoning bylaws, section one sixty-seven ten L. Area is zoned residential petition number nine hundred. How are we doing?
Good, good evening, uh we should all be on a first-name basis by now, but I'm Mike McConical uh with Conoco, I'm a project engineer for this project, with me is John Novak, is a civil engineer, also with Conoco. And this is attorney Wes Morris, also representing uh St. Harper. I think what we left off two months ago was there were two areas open for discussion. One was the circumstances in which the planning board reviewed this project and whether or not they had the correct or appropriate information in front of them when they granted their their permit. We did pull some information on this, one is the actual permit, the the approval from the planning board which clearly shows that both lots by different ownership were actually reviewed and they actually wrote their wrote their uh their approval based on the two lots. If you look back in history, this particular parcel was carved out in nineteen seventy-three. So we didn't create our own hardship by taking one single contiguous lot and splitting it in half and putting it back together. But I did realize what had happened that gave the impression that that was done. The Department of Energy Resources at one point during the solar project had requested us to merge the lots. They said any generation resource needs to be on one contiguous lot with the same owner. Later on, probably a month later, they said, no, that's a mistake. It was only the generation portion of it, that's the solar modules and the inverter have to be on the same physical lot.
The north parcel.
Right, the north parcel, but distribution lines and access is frequently and is okay to be on a separate lot. That's when it was split back into its original separate parcels. But this has always been two different parcels, it has always had two separate ownerships. And that the documentation that I just presented to uh to the board.
So when did this split occur?
I this is forty-seven years ago, the original was split into two lots long before we had any interest in the property. And when this when this project began, its inception, it was two different lots. It was owned by Springer and it was owned by uh um Conoco, Conoco Energy. Those are two separate two separate lots and they had always been separate.
Springer being the owner of the soap and Conoco being the, oh, the other way around?
Other way around.
Okay.
So the during the permitting process, the planning board approval process, this was presented as a singular project with the access road and the utility access always through here. So all of the meetings with the planning board, all of the meetings with the conservation commission, all of the uh butter meetings where butter attendance, anybody that was impacted by this has seen this. They have seen that road, they have seen those utility lines, they have seen this project and this configuration. It was a very short period of time in which it was merged into two lots because of the information that was given us to us by the Department of Energy Resources. When they realized that was an error, it didn't need to be, it was broken back apart, I think Wes has the the history on that. So before we move on to the the actual hardship of the project and the essence of the why we're here, are there any questions around the planning board approval or the circumstances in which this project was originally reviewed?
No, go ahead.
Okay, um as far as the hardship, um when this project was originally conceived, we always looked at both entrances, so we had this entrance and this entrance. When the topo was done and the environmental impacts were were assessed, the wetlands were delineated. It became very clear that this portion of the site would uh would have extraordinary impacts not only in the local neighborhood with hydrology and digging through the wetlands, but it would also isolate this section of the wetlands from the main wetlands and even.
The wetlands being all in green, not red?
All in green.
Yeah, okay.
But there's there's wetlands up around this area, but I'm talking about what.
Part question.
The the pocket here that prevents ninety-seven percent of this entire parcel from being accessed by this very small portion. So we're limited by the topography in the in the soils and the the nature of the of the land that connects the frontage into the main part of the upland site where the development is. So right from the very beginning, we moved over to this particular parcel with with the access.
Which was separate and not owned by?
Which was a separate lot and not owned by the same entity that owned the main lot. So these people partnered together, they said, okay, I'll buy that lot from you and we but but do we have to do it separately? And there was a lot of discussion that went on, but it was always a separate parcel. And the project was conceived and drawn and went through the entire permitting process as a separate lot as demonstrated through the the planning board review documents and through their decision, they clearly show it as two separate lots. And in fact, that lot was a separate lot going back at least forty-seven years from the documentation we found, long before we had any interest in the property.
That's why it's chosen as a separate lot on the assessors maps as well, goes way back.
Yeah. So having said that, I'm just, again, getting back to the hardships, because of the, the, uh, the soils, the topography, the conditions that exist today, if we were to move this over here, now you've got another abutter who's never seen this pro- project in the context of it being right next to that, their, their house, but there was an extraordinary amount of impacts. And I, if we need, um, John can talk a little bit about the square footage that has to be, uh, disturbed, the wetlands area destroyed, the amount of infill to build up a road across this point to connect over here would have extraordinary impacts on the hydrology for these neighbors here would isolate this whole pocket of wetlands. No wildlife could get, you know, you know, I mean, you, you can create culverts, you can create things to try to get, uh, wildlife to, you know, to cross over a road. But the point is, is our extraordinary impacts to use this particular, uh, frontage for the site. So after all of these assessments, going through the conservation commission, reviewing all of these environmental, uh, issues, uh, it was chosen from the very beginning that this is the right way to connect. Minimal, minimal impacts, minimal abutter impacts, um, and, uh, and of course it was less to construct. You know, if we're coming through here versus bringing in soils and disturbing this. In all likelihood, if we went back to the conservation commission, if it was approved to go through here locally, it would likely get disapproved at the state level with that level of impacts. I don't know what your thoughts are on this, John, but, uh, it's, it's a much, much more difficult project to get approved because of those impacts.
But our conservation approved it?
They approved it through here.
Only, not through the wetlands?
They approved it as, as the project is designed today. We have an order of conditions. We're ready to go. With this configured as it is. And I think the, the debona property over here, there was some, uh, requests for impacts associated with the road being here and putting some trees in, so there's some things that were added to the project to try to, to mitigate some of the issues that were created by putting the road close to the property here. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions or Wes, if you have any comments or. I think the, the biggest, the biggest point I want to put across is this project was thoroughly reviewed by the town, by both the planning board and the conservation commission. It was always in this configuration, always. So abutters, the town has reviewed it, abutters have reviewed it in this configuration and it was approved. And we did not create this hardship ourselves. This was two lots long before we ever got involved with the project.
Uh, any questions from the board, gentlemen?
Mr. Shane, before the questions, did I make that statement?
Hold on one second. I'll open it up to others in a minute. Who's Boker? The O W K, uh?
It's a, it's a separate entity that was created, uh, a legal entity for financial and legal reasons.
On the separate lot?
On the separate.
On the, on the south lot, on the south lot?
Right, yes.
Has Boker granted an easement?
Yes, it's already on record.
The registry of deeds?
Yes, it is.
Do we have a copy of that?
It should have been sent into the town. That was one of the early requirements. I could certainly produce that tomorrow. I think I may have.
Tell us about the application.
Yeah, I think so. I just think, um.
What is this now?
That's the, that's the.
Well, you do have it, great.
That's what we asked for at the registry of deeds as reported.
Oh, okay.
And this is an official, original copy, alter, that shows, uh, the easement and the language associated with it. This is a.
What's the date on that?
This is, this is a revised copy, April of nineteen, so this is about, uh, five months ago. But this is a, that's the date of this alter. It's not, I don't know what the date is, um, on the actual, uh, easement.
Two thousand thirteen.
So the easement.
Twentieth of December, two thousand.
Preexisted, the alter. This was, this was needed by the developer's legal team in order to get financing through their, their different investors. They required an, an alter to make sure that the project was. As I was saying.
Peter, do you have questions?
Processing all this.
Lot of moving parts.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the north parcel has a hundred and seventy feet of frontage.
Yes, yes.
The south parcel has what?
Seventy, I believe.
Seventy.
Seventy. What's the requirement for frontage on a, under the zoning bylaws?
The southern lot is, is part of the, uh, is considered a state lot.
Okay, and what's the frontage requirement on, on the state lot?
Yeah, it's, it's the, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's less than, uh, it's roughly fifty.
I should have, I should have that one here. Yeah, we just looked at that the other day. Oh, here it is. Minimum fifty feet, the state lots. Under one six seven dash sixteen. Section, uh, section B, under one six seven sixteen, it's fifty feet.
Sorry, we're reading. We don't read fast. Could you address from my benefit the, uh, the zoning bylaw one sixty-seven ten, a dimensional intensity regulation specifically paragraph L. Access to all lots shall only be through or across this legal frontage. No common driveways are allowed unless otherwise provided for within the chapter?
Well, that's the, that's the bylaw from which we're seeking relief by way of lot variance. And, uh, we meet all the criteria. There are three legal criteria. I don't know if you guys have ever been sued by a certain board and been sued. You have.
Once a place.
You have to meet the three-prong test and this, this does the facts behind it. I'm gonna give it, I have a copy for you to view in for the. Uh, meets the three-prong test. It, uh, has to be relating to the soil or topography and I think I gave you two.
You did.
Thanks. It has to create hardship, which is clear here. We have an environmental hardship. And it, a literal enforcement of it, a literal enforcement of this, requiring us to go through the hundred and seventy-foot frontage here will, would require us, it's a hardship. It would require us to go through the swamp. I went out there, I've been out there a few times, first on my home shorts, it didn't work, because I went down with Skunk Cavage and, and. But, uh, I went back and this is not the way to go. This, this is alleviates the hardship. And then finally, there's the third prong of the test is that it doesn't derogate from the public good. And certainly, it doesn't derogate from the public good. It will get this done, which is a public good, which.
Well, it doesn't derogate from the intent of the Bible.
Intent of the Bible.
The intent of the Bible or it's?
Is, is probably, well, I, it's, it's like Cressken. I'm trying to figure out what the intent was, but I imagine it relates to traffic. And it isn't like we're in the center of town and we're creating a traffic problem here. That's a, you know the road. I've been down Franklin Street many times and I, and I was up there the other day and there isn't a lot of traffic out there. This isn't gonna create a real derogation of that. Well, the nature of the development is not a retail facility where it's gonna attract any kind of traffic anyway. This is a fairly benign, for that standpoint, right? There is. And it's actually even better for the abutters. I'm not sure they're not gonna agree with that, but if we have to go in through here, let's say we could finally get some permitting and so forth and create a way in through here. There're gonna be a lot of trucks and stuff for a long time hauling stuff in, whereas through here, it's high land.
What are they gonna do with that lot?
Just get in there.
Wow. It's gonna be a many-use.
So what's gonna happen to that lot right there?
This lot?
Yes.
This, this lot will likely be sold for a single-family home, likely.
How could that be?
Well, I'm, I don't own the lot and all I know is retaining it as a buildable lot.
But it needs a hundred, it needs a hundred fifty-foot frontage. It fits to the, the estate lot.
Estate lot, fifty-foot.
There's, yeah. It's always been a buildable lot.
And that's not the applicant. The applicant doesn't own it. All we own, athletes, all we own is the easement. We don't even own the fee of the land. We own an easement.
And who owns, who owns that lot right now?
Boker LLC.
And who owns the, the bigger parcel?
Uh, that is St. Carfa, St. Carfa.
So Boker LLC is given the right, the easement to, to travel on that.
Access and utility.
And that, that easement is registered in the.
It's registered, yes, registered, it exists. That's exactly right.
And that lot right there, how many acres is it? At one point, something?
Four.
Four acres?
It's a four or three. Um, it was four before they cut that off. No, that's the bucket bitch. No, that's obvious.
What's the date on that, on this plan right here in front of you?
This alter plan is dated, um, April of twenty nineteen. So it's five months ago.
And what was the date of the plan when it was first approved, the form A by the planning board?
Is that in the, uh, planning board?
I have here November nineteenth, two thousand nine, a form A approval was endorsed by the planning board with no easement shown, registry of deeds, plan fifty-five, page five eighty-four.
This particular reference to the planning board approval was July twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen.
There's no dates on any of the emails on.
That's the, that's the date of the plan that was, was approved, which they referenced the two separate lots.
So it was formed made in two thousand and nine without, without an easement?
That's what.
That's what it, that's what it said.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'd have to research that a bit, but.
It sounds like that's correct. When, when was this easement given?
I don't know, fourteen?
It was on this one?
Twenty thirteen?
Twenty thirteen. I don't think it was that early. Exclusive access and utilities, isn't it? No, maybe it was. We never found St. Carfa. I, okay. And the answer to the question on that, the size of the lot, three point zero six seven acres.
Was the lot in the large lot ever owned by the same country person at any time?
Same person at any time.
Who owned that?
Both, both parcels, was that owned by the same?
During that period of time where, um, the Department of Energy Resources, they were under the same entity. I, I believe it was under.
I think it was Boker.
I think it was Boker. It, it had to be for their energy reasons, some state regulations encode. That was the only reason to combine them. And it was for a period of maybe two or three or four months. And then when they realized an error was made, they said, okay, we, they, we never wanted those combined and they were reseparated back to their original configuration. So I think it, there was a very short period of time in which they were combined and had the same, uh, ownership.
Was this before you needed the easement or was it after?
I'm, I'm sure it was.
One sixty-seven sixteen.
But I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure.
She's, she's staying in that.
Okay, well.
I'd have to look at, I, I think we'd have to look at the history of.
When was this registered as a, as an, as a right of way?
As an easement.
I'd have to go back and look at the registry of deeds to want it recorded and I don't have that information here.
The last time you guys came in here, it wasn't registered?
It was.
It was?
Yes. It was recorded. I can provide that information tomorrow, but I, I just don't, unless you have it.
I don't have it.
Yeah, I guess. I may have the easement plan here.
The easement plan was recorded in, uh, twenty eighteen. So it was recently recorded?
Yeah.
So they just did that recently?
Twenty thirteen, yeah.
It wasn't done in the past, it wasn't?
Yeah, I knew, I knew it was, I knew it was in fact, twenty thirteen. And this is. Yeah, this is, this is a, uh, this is part of the alter. This is not, this is not being small. I mean, I could, I can dig out that information. But, no, it's not there yet. Okay.
It's fifty feet.
So when they knew they couldn't cross the other one, the others, the other way, it would cost them too much money to do it. So they came in on that site and they figured they'd get an easement out of it.
Well, the project was always defined coming through here, even prior to the easement being granted. I think all of the engineering work in permitting had to be in place. And then the owner said, look, we'll, we'll help you develop this project. We want, we wanna make sure it can get permitted. And if it can get permitted, we'll grant you the easement. That was the language in these, these, uh, these, uh, what do they call them? These contract, yeah, purchase and sale, sales agreements.
So whoever buys that lot has that easement on his property for the?
Correct, correct, basically.
I mean, the only thing I, I'm, I'm thinking of is that if you owned those lots prior to.
And one lot shall be served by the.
You're asking, you mean, in my, you're asking us to give you. And these are, uh, zoning for that property to be a, a retreat lot. But you're creating your own problem, your, your own hardship because you owned it before. And you're asking us to now say, okay.
The applicant did, the applicant at St. Carfa, St. Carfa. Green Apple, five, four. They own this big one. They didn't sell us this.
I thought you told me that, that they owned everything together. They had to give you one part.
We have the. But they're not the applicant. The applicant is. We have a home system. That was never intended to be part of the project. It was a regulatory.
Didn't you just say that you separated the properties afterwards when you found out that you didn't have to do a certain item?
They were separate to begin with, back to nineteen seventy-three. And there was a regulatory issue by the Department, Department of Energy Resources said, we're not gonna approve you to get the benefits of the state solar, um, tariffs if they're not on the same parcel. I said, what do you mean that they're not on the same? They have to be on the same parcel. So we said, okay, we're moving quickly at that point. We said, let's combine them legally and we'll try to figure, figure this out later. They got back to us within a couple of weeks and said, no, 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 that was a mistake. Only the array and the, the hardware associated with the generating unit needs to be on the same parcel. The access road and the utility lines can be anywhere. They said, okay, well, you didn't tell us that in the beginning. So we created this issue partially because we had misinformation from the state, but it was never intended to be that way. This was always two different parcels. It was reviewed by the town as two different parcels. All the abutters that have come to these meetings have seen it as two parcels. It was never intended to be one parcel. The only reason it ever became one parcel for a very, very short period of time is because the state of Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources gave us bad information. Said, we're not gonna approve this to connect to the, connect to the utility and you for to get the tariff benefits if you don't combine them on the same lot. So we, okay, let's, let's combine them together. And then they came back a couple of weeks later and said, oh, only kidding, we made a mistake after we had already merged the lots. So they were separated again, back to their original configuration, which goes back to, as far as I can tell, nineteen seventy-three at least. And the applicant in this circumstance, that's what's important. Did we create our own hardship? I don't know who Boker is. I represent St. Carfa. St. Carfa never owned this. We own this. Okay, we own an easement over here. That's it. We never did. I don't know what the negotiations were. I wasn't involved with it.
Or you don't own an easement, you just have an easement?
You have an easement, yeah. Well. The rights.
You don't own one.
Deed of easement.
You what?
You get a deed of easement, yes. And, uh, we have easement, but we never owned it, so we didn't create our own hardship. It's the applicant.
And, uh, we have easement, but we never owned it, so we didn't create our own hardship. It's the applicant, not Boker.
Okay, so because of the topography, uh, and, and the hardship requirements you feel you meet.
Right.
The northern parcel, as it sits right there, is useless. Without the southern parcel.
It's a problem.
There is no access to the northern parcel as it exists right now, without, without.
Basically, yeah.
Without the easement.
With the, yeah, without the easement, it is not, correct.
So the northern parcel is not an estate lot?
The southern parcel is an estate lot.
The northern parcel is not an estate lot?
No, it's not, and it has, it has legal frontage.
Correct.
And it has legal what?
Legal frontage.
Which means it has access to the lot.
Right.
It's just not a pleasant access to the lot.
That's right. Well, it's, it's a hardship access, always, due to the topography, that's the whole language.
That's the reason we're here. It always had the frontage.
Yep.
It's just a matter of the hardship associated with that frontage.
Yep.
And the impacts associated with that.
Impacts to the wetlands and all of that, yeah.
Can, so if you build that accessway, that would make that, that southern lot the smaller lot, that, the, the frontage for that estate lot would then be for two lots, which would make that bottom lot no longer an estate lot.
The access, the access.
Yeah, um, so no, no more than one lot shall be served by the accessway.
That's what we're coming through for the.
Right, so that's, it would make that southern lot no longer an estate lot. So, because now you're ac, two lots are now accessing that one frontage.
That's why I said, you don't have an estate lot. If you have, if you have what Peter just said.
So, so the, the intent of an estate lot is to allow you to build on that, that obviously, we all, we all know that. But the, the intent is not then to create an, an accessway for another lot. It's to be able to build on that original lot. So the, the fifty feet is, is different than all the rest of the lots because they want you to be able to build on that, and they're giving you some accessway. But they don't want you to be able to then zip into other places, which is what we're doing here. So it's gonna make that, that southern lot null and void, or no longer an estate lot, or all sorts of.
It'd have to.
And then the frontage doesn't work.
I would agree that, the memory here, it would appear that it would require an additional variance.
Right.
To, to give relief from that problem with regard to the dual lot, dual usage, yes.
But I know the conditions between, is, with, with Sincarfa and this particular project was to be able to get through this lot and grant them the easement to get through all the permitting. So there's, there's gonna be a legal issue between the owner of this lot and the owner of this.
That they probably should've saw when they bought that land, right?
Well, we were, when we went in front of the planning board, we discussed this very issue.
Yeah.
And it was deemed a non-issue, and it was actually called out as two separate lots, and it was presented as two separate lots. With the, with the road drawn in, the utility poles there, everything was as you're looking at it now. So I, I'm not sure, you know, what to say, other than we're here to get a variance to allow the access to the back lot from this particular estate lot. I mean, that's, that's the reason we're here, is to get that particular.
Now, the building's already, it's already been, being built?
This is, land has been cleared, and there's a very rough road, but then, and then the project is. Erosion controls have been put in place, trees cleared, and a very rough road drawn in, and then all work stopped.
And, and maybe, so my, my concern is that, but just by having that road access that second lot nullifies the ability to have that frontage, to build that road, right?
It may, it may, I don't.
I mean, we're, this is, this is one of the reasons we're here.
Yeah.
Is to try, is, we're trying to get a variance to be, get a.
But that's, so, and the, I mean, that, that's not what you asked for the variance for. You're asking for the variance for one sixty-seven-ten. That's one seventy, sixty-seven, sixteen-four, or whatever that is, so. It's one sixty-seven, sixteen-D. No, it's C, sorry. Nope, D.
I can say it, because it's D.
It's D.
See, as I, as I represented earlier, I don't represent these people. It's a different owner. I represent Sincarfa, and there may indeed, there were two different owners. There may indeed be future issues, legal issues, between us and the owner of this.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be in their best interest to buy that piece of property?
Love to.
Why don't they?
Tell you what, I got a house, you give me seven or eight million dollars, I'll sell it to you. You know, you know what I'm saying?
It ain't that.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's only, it's only three acres.
Yeah, I, I.
If they, they build this, this gigantic, uh, you know, solo field, why don't they just buy the property and, and get, get away from this, all this mess?
He can sell it as a single-family house lot, let Sincarfa buy it.
But how can it be sold as a, I mean, you're asking us to grant that as an estate lot?
No, we're.
See, I'm confused on what you're asking of.
No, we're, we're asking, we're asking for the, for the shared access.
But by saying the shared access, you're telling us that that's an estate lot. And we're telling you by our definition that it's not.
But isn't that why we're here? I mean, it doesn't, the zoning board of appeals have the authority to grant the access to that?
Well, you're not, you're technically not asking for that access. What you're asking for is, is access via a different location.
Right. I don't.
So we can't, so we, like.
But on behalf of Sincarfa, the applicant, I don't care about the estate lot. I care about the access. That's what the relief we sought. I want, that's the variance I'm seeking, to get access through the back, so we don't have to go through the swamp. It's pure and simple. Other parties who own this are developing other things.
Hasn't he already granted you the, the access of that lot?
By issuing a, a deed that's deeded?
The easement exists on record.
So why are you asking us to?
Because we need relief from the bylaw.
But, so you're asking us is to grant a variance, but not care about the impact of a different lot in this, right next door?
I don't own it. My client doesn't own it.
Yeah, right.
I don't care. It may.
I'm sorry, get a gate.
So, so, I mean, he, you're asking for us to grant a variance that would impact another lot?
Mm-hmm. Significantly.
Which, which arguably is, goes against the bylaws of the town, but only because it doesn't affect your client.
Cause you're deeming that southern lot useless.
And arguably, you can't, well, yeah, you can't use that frontage for anything.
Right.
Including that road, right?
Well, that's what we're seeking relief for.
No, you're seeking, you just don't wanna go through that northern entrance.
Correct, and this is.
So arguably, like, you, I, I don't know, it's.
So they're looking for relief on a piece of property, the bottom line, they don't own.
Yeah, but the, the people that own that piece of property gave them.
An easement.
The easement. So that would give them the, the right to travel that piece of.
We have that right.
To travel it?
To go on it.
To travel, to go.
I think the understanding, I'm wondering that easement was.
It's the same going on Hemlock Lane?
Yep, the underlying law's rights would not be impacted.
But granting an easement on a piece of property.
But we all, do, do we have a copy of that? Do we have any of that?
No longer meets the definition of an estate lot, so they have no.
Is it any?
Over here.
So without the easement, there's no access to that.
There's no access. But they granted them an easement, now there is an access.
Mm-hmm.
Once, once you, once you put that easement in there.
And that's deeded.
With, with the deed that it says they can travel that piece of land to get to their property.
The easement says that. Their variance says that. He can't do it because you can't have two accesses to the same frontage.
Right, so you're eliminating the access for the southern lot.
Yeah.
Deeming that lot useless.
Useless.
And, and shutting off the access to their lot, arguably.
So then what would be the liability of the board if we rented somebody's property, was trying to sell the property as a, as a buildable estate lot, and the property's useless?
Also based on an easement that we haven't seen.
Well, he did say that.
I don't know, but it's in, is it in there?
He gave us a copy. Did you take it back when I was?
I did. I did, that's it. You, and you'll see, it has a reference to.
Yeah.
One, the whole area. Pass when we pass, all of that, yes.
Any other questions on the board?
Well, I'm having a hard time with it, so.
Yeah.
Why don't we open it up? Mike, want to, just give your name and?
Yeah, Michael LaVona, two twenty-nine Franklin Street. Um, so there's a whole bunch of things to know about. If we wanted to go back in time and talk about the original owner of the property, Mr. Springer, Mr. Springer owned that piece of property first. He actually created his own hardship, because as we know, he developed all of Kenzie's Path here. So Mr. Springer left this piece of property with only this one access to the property. That, to me, is creating your own hardship.
So that borders Kenzie's Path right there on South.
This is Kenzie's Path, all of those, yeah, yeah. So Mr. Springer did this to himself. The fact that he sold it to another entity, they full well knew that that access existed there. I, I don't believe you can come to the board and go, oh, no, hey, look what we bought, and now we need help. They're coming down asking for access across this parcel, which we've heard many times, they didn't own, and what, when did they own it? They owned it for a couple of months. According to the registry of deeds, they did own both properties. September twenty sixteen, they bought both properties with Boker, which has since been sold, that's twenty sixteen, that's, um, two and a half years, not months, Mike, two and a half years.
I, I didn't know the exact date.
Okay.
So there was a period of time in which they were, they were.
Right, and during that time, they also filed with the planning board, July twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, and they also recorded that easement, uh, May, uh, March twentieth, twenty eighteen. So while they owned both pieces of property, they added the access easement, full well knowing that they were gonna try to do this after the fact that they presented to the planning board.
That's not accurate.
And I've got copies of the deed.
Wait a minute, hold on.
So, the, the plan that they presented to the planning board, absolutely, they had access coming up through this, the southern parcel here. That was the intent. They were gonna forfeit that piece of property to get access to the rear lot. That, that's what they presented. There was a, there was a water retention basin in here that has been removed, it just went away. I don't know where that went, but now they're gonna try to spin that off as a house lot. And what they're gonna do is, we don't care about this person, we don't care for this person, they're gonna sell that, and next month, that, that person's gonna be in this, in this same room saying, I just bought this piece of property, and guess what? I need a variance to get onto my own property that I just bought. And you guys are basically gonna be forced to give that to them because it's a hardship on them.
Isn't that the roadway they wanted to do, to go through to build the houses out back?
It is.
That's the same roadway that they wanted to, to.
On the first project?
On the first project, that we stayed on for two years. They wanted that road to go in and.
Split off.
Split it off and put the houses out back there. That's the same road.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond one little bit. When he says they, we're not Springer. We're not Boker. We're Sincarfa. We bought this with, these are different companies.
Not, not to interrupt, you don't understand. When they first came in here to do that, this project, that, that right of way, that road right there.
Yeah.
Okay, that was one whole parcel. They came in to do that parcel, then put in, what, fifty houses or eighty houses?
Forget it, it was an awful lot.
Whatever it was. Whatever it was.
Bazillion.
That road was, was already there. That parcel, that piece of parcel, that piece of land didn't exist. Maybe it existed, they were, they were gonna put a house on one side of it. Remember, when they were, they would put a house right there.
They were gonna put a couple.
Yeah, in the front, two in the front, and then they're gonna branch out in the back.
But I, I don't think, I mean, that's a, I'm not a project, it's unrelated to what we're doing, but I think these were always two separate parcels, even.
No, I'd say, at the time, that was one parcel.
They were two separate parcels, but owned by the same person.
In, in one project, incorporated in one project.
Yes.
They created their own hardship by selling this land to Sincarfa. And that just, according to the registry of deeds, happened this past January. That's when the property was separated in name, but the applicant didn't create its own hardship. The applicant at Sincarfa, they didn't split off anything. It had been done. And there's no, no commonality of ownership in between. We don't control them. If we control them, buy this.
Even though, if we give you, if we give you a variance, that piece of land is useless to somebody else.
It would appear.
Mike, I'm sorry, were you all done?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, the variance they're looking for is access.
Right.
It is, they wanna vary that you have to access your own property through your own frontage. That's what they need to vary. They're not accessing their own, their own lot through their own frontage. Again, that one accessway can only be used access one lot. So once, once we give enough variance, that.
The only way to make it right is combine both of them.
And I understand that they say we don't own both of them. They don't own both of them, that's understandable. But the next applicant's gonna be in here saying, I own a piece of property.
Because we deem it useless.
Right, right. But are they gonna know that? Is it gonna be on the deed that that piece of property is useless when they go to buy that? They're gonna buy it, and they're gonna be in here saying, I understand there's an access easement. I now need access to my property, and you guys are gonna have to give them that access. So that doesn't make any sense. They're, they're forcing your hand to, whoever buys that piece of property, you're gonna have to give them access.
Anybody else from the audience on?
One more thing.
Yes, board. Could you just give your name, Bobby?
Yeah, I'm Robert DeGona, two twenty-nine Franklin Street. This property was split off with the specific intent of providing access to the rest of this property. We've been through forty Bs apartment, Bert, you've been part of all of this, forty Bs apartments, uh, you, you name it. Always, that lot was the entranceway, and that's what it was bought for. And like I said, when they applied for this permit, it was owned by Boker, both parcels. And I can prove that to you, Mike. You said just the opposite here tonight, but I'm telling you, I can.
I said what, what did I say?
You said the opposite, you said they were not owned by the same people.
I did not say that. I said there was a period of time in which they were owned by the same entity.
When you applied for this permit, they were both owned by the same person. When you applied to the.
When I applied for, when I applied to the planning board, as the records show, there were two owners, two separate owners memorialized in their approval.
Who were they?
Springer and Conical Energy. It was one of these documents here. Conical Energy LLC and Springer Construction Incorporated. That is the planning board approval that shows. I, I'm not trying to deceive anybody here, I'm just saying, this is what, this is what is on record.
Which is the address on it is two forty-one Franklin.
Guys, we're not, we go through.
The, 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 the application is two forty-one Franklin Street. So if they had no intention of ever having that piece of property incorporated in the project, why are they using the address of that piece of property? Why wouldn't it have been zero Franklin Street?
Which is.
The northern one.
Yeah. And the detention bond just vanished because there's not room for the detention bond in the house.
And again, we, we want this project to go through. The backyard has gone up, the trees are all cut down, we've been before conservation. I mean, this, this project needs to be done. It's just, now we've been delayed months and months and months because of this, trying to get a house out front, which was, again, never the understanding before conservation, planning.
Or the planning board, or anybody else. And if, if it is approved, they're gonna have to go back before planning, because they're changing your original permit.
Piece of property.
They're now adding a single-family home and deleting a detention bond. They're gonna have to go back to planning. I don't know.
Does the project require a retention bond?
It was redesigned by civil engineering.
So does it, does it require?
It was approved as part of the plan. They can go back to planning and get it engineered out of the, the documentation. It was approved in the plan, and it should still be there.
Well, what is the pleasure of the board? Wanna go do a site inspection?
Not according to the description, no.
I can always go get back to Sincarfa and just test their interest in buying a lot, which someone recommended.
That would be, that would be the, the best thing that you can have.
Which would make the problem go away.
Make a problem go away, it'd be a lot easier on your head.
Well, would you like to continue this till next month, or, I think at this point, we'd be ready to vote on it, if you wanted.
No, I, I, I think so. I, I think I need to go back to Sincarfa and say.
What would you put at all value on that, that retreat lot? You guys wanna?
This, this lot here?
Yeah.
Is it, if, if it was a buildable lot, I don't know, buck and a quarter, maybe, or?
Okay, and.
Hundred fifty, I don't know.
Your company's gonna benefit, benefit a lot more than a buck and a quarter.
We'll talk to them.
I can.
It makes it go away real quick.
Well, I think, uh, I think if, if you didn't wanna continue it and find out and pursue that, that avenue, which I think is a great idea, uh, my own two cents, uh, the board, we could either vote on it tonight, and I think you could kinda see where the board's coming from, or you can ask for continuance until next month, see what you can do, and, uh.
It's very hard to swallow. If you sit in our seats, it'd be hard, very hard to swallow.
It, it, it certainly seems like the, the long-term, I don't know if there is a discussion or not. It seems very clear that the intent was to get this variance, and then whoever has that lot to come in here and, and also. and then whoever has that lot to come in here and also then ask for a similar variance for...
They own it, you people own it.
And then, and it seems like that was the plan. I don't know. And I don't know if it is or not.
As long as I've been involved in it, it wasn't the plan.
Right, but it certainly seems crafted to meet that.
I would recommend that we continue.
If you could give Alana something in writing to continue it for next month? Because we've got to be pretty close to...
Yeah, it would be September 25th, would be the 100th day.
Okay, so we'd need us to handle by a letter from you requesting a... From, yes, the applicant. He had the suit on and a tie, so I was going with him.
Don't look at the seat.
Do you need this or can I...
No.
Put that to your record.
That's right, no, I don't need it.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Then we'll continue it till next month. Give us a call, we'll get you a date, time and all that fun stuff, all right?
Motion to...
I'm sorry?
I didn't recognize your name.
Yes, do you need a, we'll need a motion to, we'll need a motion to continue the petition number... Petition number...
900.
900, thank you, until October?
Make a motion to continue petition 900 to October.
10th.
10th.
In a second?
7th. October 7th.
7th. Thank you for your question.
And just one final question. If Sincofer decides to purchase the lot, that all these issues go away?
We can't say that, but...
Some issues go away.
Okay. Can you give me some insight into what...
No. But I think you could see where the board was coming from. I think it would, a couple of different members mentioned that that would be the logical solution to make this whole thing go.
Then you have the right away. You have the whole parcel, you can do whatever you want.
Well, it's not up to me.
I don't know, I'm just saying, I mean, for...
That's the way we go.
If you want to cross on the north side, that's going to cost you a lot of money.
It's going to cost more than $125,000.
The question is, if the lots are combined, would we still need a variance to go through that 50-foot?
Ooh, that's a good question.
Because you have...
Why are you going to ask, "You own the lot?"
Well, the lot is, you have to go, your access has to be through your legal frontage.
Well...
It becomes a retreat lot, then?
Maybe you treat it as an estate lot, use the 50-foot frontage and go right in the way of intent.
Yeah.
Treat it as an estate. Because it is.
If the lot goes away, it would just be...
It's an estate lot, becomes a...
That's right.
Does the access, the access road have to be 150 feet of frontage now?
No.
No, it just has to have.
Good.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Is the structure within 50 feet of the lot line?
Buy a bag of peanuts instead of a bottle of gold.
Is that structure, that structure might be within the 150 feet of the lot?
So a lot of the continuance passed...
It might.
Okay, 30 days or 60 or...
Why don't we make it 60?
So the estate law has to be, you might need a variance setback. Just because for the estate law, you have to be 50 feet out the lines and all that stuff for to qualify.
60 days?
I don't know, it's worth looking at. Just looking at that section.
If it's absorbed, is it really an estate law?
If it's absorbed, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, no, but if it's part of that 50, 60...
You need an extension of the 60 days?
Yeah, let's see whether or not the big one is.
The next year is when, October 7th? Oh, yeah, that's fine. But the next year is the 7th of August. Yes, that's fine.
What's that?
Are we good?
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you later.
11 years.
Okay, let's do some, we got bills, we got bills, we got bills.
Someone else?
Why do they want to... When they can buy their...
Watch it, we're being recorded. Guys, we're on tape, we're on tape. Let's do some quick mail. The planning board. Kled Ferreira, 65 GCF LLC, 143 Pleasant Street, Rockland. Dimister Ferreira. Why do we get, attaches a copy of certificate of approval of the site plan for the development of property and building an office and workshop on 450/550 Industrial Drive, Halifax. Plan was drawn by Bracken Engineering. Zero Spring Street, Halifax. Send a letter concerning Zero Spring Street. You stated that the property is deemed abandoned by the town and the owner is looking to have it removed from the abandoned list. That's just a request from Mr. Robert Picaroli.
Otherwise, we have to...
Alana, what do we have from Amanda Estates? Attaches a new site plan for Amanda Estates, which was approved by the, at the planning board meeting September 18th, 2014. The plan was refiled in the planning board in order to waive the lot line requirements for multifamily development sections. According to 167-7D2A, public hearing will be held on September 5th, notice attached.
They're going to court again?
We missed it.
200, you know, that was supposed to be given to last month, but it was...
Are they going to court again? Are they going to court again, Amanda Estates?
Yeah, I just read it.
Attaches a copy from the planning board, attaches a copy, certified approval of the site plan, development of property to build an office and workshop, 450 again, from Mark Millius, the clerk. And this is the old Colony Planning Council agenda. Anyone like to review that on their own can prove at your leisure. Other than that... Oh, sign this sheet, do we need that done?
This is one.
I thought we did that already, but...
I'm going to get up at 1:00.
At what?
At 1:00.
1:00 AM?
I was in Los Angeles, 2:30 this morning.
You're kidding me.
Woo, damn, it's not even opening, 2:30.
Yeah, you're probably right.